I think we've had these ever since I began our council.
They've been here for quite a while.
Okay.
All right, call this meeting to order here at City Hall, November 2nd, 2021. Are there any additions to the agenda this evening?
I need a 10-minute executive session for potential hire.
Do you want to add these or just put them on the report?
Yeah, we can. And then under appropriations, I need to add the KMEA Midstates invoice in the amount of $19,342.36 and Stanion in the amount of $2,673.44.
Are there any other additions to the agenda this evening?
I'd make a motion to approve the additions to the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Are there any citizens comments this evening? Okay. Consent agenda approved minutes, regular council meeting, October 19th, 2021. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance 11-221 in the amount of $87,610.35 and petty cash in the amount of $305.96.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, Stanion invoice in the amount of $2,673.44.
What is that?
Lights for the wet center.
Oh, that is coming out of the 1% sales tax. Is that the line item it come out of?
It's out of the wet center.
It was put on the wet center stuff. Now, if there's not money there, I suppose we could, yeah.
I think we talked about.
I thought we talked about pulling it from the 1%.
I thought we talked about some of that, yeah.
I just want to make sure it's pulled from the 1%.
Yeah.
Just replace it.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. I have an invoice from KMEA Midstates in the amount of
So moved.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion?
Is that, did we just get one? Or is this for the new cat or the old cat?
It's for the new cat.
Okay.
Or that other one was on the old cat, yeah. Yeah, it was.
All right, I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to department heads. Electrical Department, Jeff.
Oh, just a couple of things. We've got the circuit finished over there from the east of the library to the rest home. It's cut over and energized. We've got racking out to do down along Fourth Street a little bit, but we'll let it wait till we get some other things caught up. So sometime this winter, we'll tear it down. But we're gonna start trimming trees. And I guess, you know, whatever else comes up. But we've got, I think we've got most everything taken care of outside, you know, other than day-to-day things that go on. I don't think we've got anything, a project really to do. It's just mostly now trimming trees, so.
Anything else? Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jeff under Electrical Department?
Oh, and the engine, you know, I thought I would hear from Cliff today. That engine can come in anytime Friday on, so. I thought I would hear back from him. He thought he would know something from Chris Farby, but he doesn't, so I don't have anything to tell you. But I would, I would expect in the next two weeks, we'll see it. Anyway.
All right, good. Good, thank you.
Probably have some kind of an update next council meeting, maybe with some pictures. If it does come in, I'll let you guys know if you want to come down while we bring it in and that stuff. I'll pass the word around, so everybody has a, if you've got time, come on down. So we got an insurance visit from EMC on the 12th. It's just a reinspection down there. It's no big deal, so.
All right, excellent. Unless there's any questions, comments, or concerns for Jeff under Electrical Department, move on to Water Department. Jason.
On the number two well down there, it's got it all wired and thermostat put in the new heater, or the heater. And I'm just waiting on Rosencrantz to get back with me and see when they can start going on that part of it. And on the wastewater side of it, I want to throw something out there to you guys. A gentleman brought a truck by and we had used it. He let us use it for a couple hours. I know we got our plates full, but I wanted to just throw this out there to you. The truck we have is not done yet. I don't think they've even started on it yet. And I'm not for sure what the cost is gonna be on that guy. And what's gonna nickel and dime us is the other part of the truck. Wheel seals are going out of it. All that's gonna need replaced. We have oil coming out of the seals on the axle part of it. And I'm not for sure what else could be wrong with that thing. And I was wanting to know if you'd let a gentleman come down here the next meeting and have a talk with you about a truck, about truck. And I'm really impressed with this. The reason I say that is, is because every time we sit there, it's lower. It's low profile. It is smaller, and I don't have to climb on that truck to sit there and get, do a thing. It's self-locking. You don't have to worry about getting wastewater completely all over you when you open that back of that hatch. And all the spouts are down low, and it's a real good safety factor on that truck. And I was just wanting to know if you guys would be interested in a gentleman coming and talking to us about it on the next meeting.
That's to replace that vac, that vac truck come on Horsington?
Yes.
Wasn't it a trash truck that they converted into a vac truck?
The one we have now. What's this one on? What's this, do you have any information on this one?
I did. I passed it along to Jamie, but I was really wanting to wait to get that. And then we could sit there and let, then we could print it out. Next meeting, you have it all right there as he's talking to you about it.
I'm okay with them coming down. I'd like to have the information a little sooner than the Friday before on it.
Okay.
I mean, if we can get some of it so we can.
Okay.
Spend a little extra time looking at things prior to.
And Jamie could print that out for you, and then I will postpone him for two more meetings?
No. Next meeting would be fine.
Oh, it will be.
I just want the information sooner than.
So he can send over a little bit more and then just forward it on.
He's a dealer, I guess?
Yes, key equipment. Yep.
Do you have any idea what he'd be wanting for that truck?
It was around $190,000 in that area. And there's no back, the good thing about it is it's all hydraulic. There's no back motor that can blow up on us again. And it's just, it was just, and when he, when we actually used the vac truck, we had done a, the storm sewer right over here. And he literally, I was babying it, and he sat there and said, "Just push it down." And I, no water, no nothing. He just pushed that back all the way down in that, that sand that far, and it just went and took it right up with no water. And then we started washing it more, then he took the line over there, and then we went and done the one going that way. And it just took everything it could take.
Pulled a sheet on what we bought that international and what we paid and how we got it and the repairs on it.
Anyone know where it got fixed before we took it to?
Right. I mean, that's a significant difference. I wasn't on when he bought that, but it was an $190,000 truck.
Oh, no, we gave 20.
That's right, yeah.
22, 24, something like that, in the war.
I'll gather what I can find.
And then check with. Is that at Murphy's? He's waiting on parts.
Yeah, that and the golf cart.
Yeah. Yeah, we've never got anything back of this parts or.
I'm not sure where you guys parked that truck when you took it to Murphy's, but I don't think it's moved since you parked it there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I've been by it probably three, four dozen times.
Yeah.
And it's sitting in the same exact spot. It was lined up actually with like four of them that were just like it vac trucks. There were four of them sitting there that one day. So.
Okay.
You want to bring anything up on the wastewater stuff?
Yeah. You guys wanted Austin here somewhere down there.
I was curious, Austin, on the reels down there, there were several of those reels that just had quite a lot of pipe left on them. What was the deal with that? Can you give us the rundown?
Uh, it depends. Some of them have more than others, because when I plan out for it, I have to plan for the material to come up out of the manhole and then, you know, some excess above, so we can put the steam plugs in.
Right.
And then depending on the setups, I can't, when I order it, I can't guarantee that we can actually do it. But some of them, we will pull through an intermediate manhole and then go to the next one. So pull two lines at once. Well, I've accounted for out of that manhole twice plus six foot above for that, so that just adds more on the reel. And then you always want to, they, they say about 20 foot or so, regardless of just your measurement, just to be safe. Because when you're reeling that in and you're pulling it up, we've got a 10,000-pound winch, and you don't want to sit there and yank it off your truck and break the truck. So it's just part of the.
Just extra.
Yeah, it's just part of the process to, one, for safety, because there are some that cut it closer than that. But I mean, when it's reeling around and we pull it in at about 125 feet per minute, when it's moving that fast, I would, I just, I haven't seen it yet, but I don't, I wouldn't want to see it come off, because it's physically secured to those spools on the far inside, so.
Right.
I don't know what it would do if we cut it any closer. It's just part of the accounting for the project.
Okay. I was just curious. Some of them look like they just had 20 feet, and some of them look like they had a, I don't know, it's probably not, but it looked like it had 100 foot on there. I mean, it just looked like a ton.
No, and that's what I'm saying. Some of the ones that look like they're more, could have been when we pulled through and lined two lines at once and then cut that middle manhole back open. So, you know, depending on the depth of the manhole, if it's 12 to 15 feet, you know, we're at 24 to 30 feet there, plus 12 foot, six and six, you know what I mean? So we're adding material, but it just saves, saves time, and it ends up creating a nicer, cleaner invert in the bottom when it flows through, if we can do that. But not every manhole allows for it, just offsets and this, that, and the other, so.
And everything is complete?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, everything's complete. I mean, overall, the project went smooth. We definitely had a couple hiccups as far as like pulling underneath the school, we saw a lot more friction pulling that pipe than we expected coming through. And that, I mean, most of your lines that you guys lined, they were definitely very good candidates after taking another second look at it and after we've got line them. The one on the school, after we got done cleaning and the tuberculation off of the buildup of the rust, I mean, you, the whole top section, most of it was basically gone. You'd have some, and then you'd have a hole, and then you'd have some. So I mean, all of them were good choices to be lined.
You know, I'm not opposed to, since they're familiar with our town, maybe getting something quoted so we can get going next year and do some more. Kind of what the guys think needs to be done. They're familiar with our town, did a good job. I think our guys should get with them, maybe plan for next year, put some money away for that.
Well, I know we didn't really spend much out of what we had budgeted for, because we used the COVID money for it. You know, it was higher than what we got, but.
It was within 10,000, 15,000?
15,000. I, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to looking for the next year, doing some more line.
Definitely. And knowing kind of roughly what we're looking at money-wise to have it there. That's. Well, I don't think it'd be any problem to pick and do just as much as we just did to be honest.
I mean, the money saved with the budget, just like it was.
Jason.
Yes, that's, that's not a problem at all. One thing I can say, and this is completely up to you guys if you want to budget it, but we, we do maintenance programs for towns as far as, and we clean anywhere from a third to a fifth of the town and then TV 15% of that yearly and just keep it on a rotation. We got lucky that you guys had approved for the iron pipe cleaning, that we didn't use all of those hours and we were able to use some hours. But there were certain lines that just to be able to get our liner in and get it water-free, we had to go down and clean farther and farther down to get the water away. So I, I don't, I'm not like big on throwing other stuff out there, but if you guys are looking at wastewater stuff, that may be something to look, look at to try and get it flowing better. Because another one, we tried to, we had an emergency bypass set up just in case underneath the school, something went awry or whatever, we could start pumping. And we went to the manhole just north of like, I think the football practice area or something like that. And that one, it was flowing, but it wasn't flowing a whole lot. We're like, oh, man, how, you know, where, where, where's it at? Because I, we would have bypassed into it, because it was, was flowing, but definitely wasn't my top of the line, like, oh, yeah, we're good to bypass to it. It would have been purely emergency, so. I, I.
See, we cleaned that last year too.
Really? Well, it, that may be something to get TV'd then, you know what I mean, as far as if you clean it.
I don't exactly what you're saying.
What, what's, what type of dirt's falling in or what type of roots are coming back or you just don't know what's hanging about.
Well, it's something to, to keep in mind.
I'd be interested in a quote for doing that yearly.
Is that you or is that gonna be someone else?
Um, it'd be Melinda in our office. She takes care of all of our, our maintenance, uh, cleaning and TV maintenance, stuff like that. I mean, I, I can send, send you an email and get you in contact with her. Right, right now, we're kind of shorthanded, so I'm, I'm out in the field a lot right now. It may be a few days before I get it to you, but I can get it to you.
Perfect.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Okay, anything else underwater department?
Did you talk about the meters at all, Jamie, the ones that are giving us problems? Is that, is it something that?
I was gonna talk about it underneath.
Okay, moving on, Street and Park Department, Jason.
The main thing I did here lately was just winterizing everything, showing the guys how to get the sprinkler lines blown out, make sure all that was done. And then doing some odds and ends grading. And that's about it. But the other thing I was gonna throw out there, and I hate to do this to you, but our, one of our mowers got brought back. And I was well aware, or they were, they told us about it, and Jamie knows about this as well. So I just thought I'm gonna bring this up to you as well. The deck on the mower was all cracked up. We got it, broke apart and ground on it, welded it back together. Oil pan had a hole in it. They cannot get that oil pan and some parts for that mower no more. So they sat there and braised it together and got it going for now. Some, some framing work on the motor, they had to get that all welded back at the shop up there at John Deere. And I was just wanting to know, they're sending some information on that. I told Les to, if he could, get some for it. And maybe down the road, get that traded off and get us a ZTR or something that we could just use on the parks with a backer. I'm just gonna throw that out to you and see if you want to try to take that on or.
You know the specs on that mower, how many hours, what year it is and so on?
Not those specs. I know we took it up. The original reason was because of the, I want to say.
No, it was overheating. That was the first time.
Right. So we already have like $1,200 into this.
Hasn't that mower had two wiring harnesses on it?
I don't know about that one.
I think it has.
And then, so he called, like, he kept calling. They found all of this out. And then I wanted the final bill before they continued, like, I want to know how much we were at. And they said, "We're at $1,200." And I said, "We need to stop and look at everything." Because that's the oldest mower that we have.
That's the oldest one, yes. And that's why I was thinking, maybe it's time to.
Is that the one we saved for the?
I think so.
For the properties that aren't the city's?
Maybe it was well abused before that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, we've had it for.
It's probably 10 years old, or close to, I imagine.
So, but we, we have three of those, don't we? Three of those.
We usually save, we usually save those for the ditches and that stuff, you know, instead of using that new mower, because it just beats them up really bad. And it's expensive. Them mowers are terribly expensive, you know.
But those two older mowers, are they, are they around the same age, same hours, the two older ones? Because we have one that's fairly new, and then we have two older ones.
Yeah, but there's about three or four years difference in those mowers. I mean, one of them is three or four years older than the other one. We didn't buy one every year. I'm sure there's three or four years difference in them. I think I bought one, I think I bought one when I was superintendent, but that's been four years ago. That's probably the newest one we've got, I think.
So they're probably 10, seven, and four years old.
But them John Deeres are about twice as high as a lot of mowers a guy could put in a ditch too, you know. It's hard on them mowers.
I'll get the specs on all of them and.
New one when? Just didn't.
Either Cory was still here.
Yeah.
Either Cory was still here or I just taken them. Yeah.
So it's five years old.
It's been a while since Cory was here.
Yeah.
Well, I'd just like to see, you know, have the trading value to have it traded, because it is running. And Alan did fix the deck, and they got it put back on, I hope. And it's, I just, I don't know what the, I asked Les to find out when, if it was on a four months out, six months out, just like a vehicle, you know, how far are they out from getting one to trade? And so he said he was gonna send all that info, because he didn't have time to do it right there and then and there.
But it's at Great Bend right now.
No, it's here.
It's here.
Yep. I had him go get it, and then Alan worked on it today. So I'll get all the specs on all the mowers, and we can reevaluate and find out what we're gonna do.
Yeah, it's, it's not gonna have any traded value at all. I mean, it's.
They aren't going to, enough they had to raise the oil pan up. I mean, they already know what it's been through, they ain't gonna give us anything for it.
Yeah, it could be a couple of years.
It's going hard than you think right now.
It's a vac truck.
Okay, if council say okay with that, we'll let Jamie go ahead and get all that information, bring it to council next time. All right, moving on, Police Department.
Uh, the only thing Tori had was Dustin is obviously here longer than we thought, so I think the 21st.
Yeah, I think the 21st right now is my last day of the day.
So we'll get him a little longer and wish him well.
Yeah, and I'll be here probably still for the next council meeting unless I'm off, but thank you guys for everything that we guys do. That's the short time that I've been here, I've seen the department come a long way, and it's cool, and I just honor and respect you guys, so thanks.
Thanks for working.
Yeah. And Officer Melton, I just want to thank you personally for handling that situation over at the library as quickly as you and Chief Perez did. So thank you very much for that. It was greatly appreciated. All right, anything else under that? Or we, see, anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Chief Perez to pass on to Jamie? So she could let her know? No? All right. Fire Chief, Chief Sanders.
Hello, everything?
All right, anybody got any questions, comments, or concerns for Chief Sanders? All right. City Administrator, Jamie.
Um, I will be gone three days next week, just so everyone knows. We sent bills out Friday. Doing pianos went well. I think everyone enjoyed it. They want to see it come back. So we'll probably be planning that for jubilee and all of that fun stuff. To the not-so-much fun stuff, we have some meters that are just not working. I would really like to start seeing the meters hand-read, and I've told guys this, but I, I would like to start seeing everything red at least twice a year. We've had them longer than I've been here. We have a little bit of money budgeted each year to replace these water meters, but I do think we need to start probably budgeting to where, if need be, we're replacing more than a few, just to be on the safe side. But to me, physically seeing them at, at least once a year, if not twice a year, we'll be able to, and yes, it should be automated and all of that stuff, but if you're going around and seeing them, then you can see a little bit more than what my computer may or may not tell me. So that's just what we've been, and I have it up on the board, the guys all know. But I just want to stay on top of technol, I mean, right when we put them in, they were old, you know, that's just how technology is. You buy a computer and it's, it's already old, so I just want to stay on top of that and make sure that we are doing what we can to keep them the way they need to be.
Council have a problem with having them do it twice a year? I think it's probably a, a good plan to go ahead and have them do it twice a year. Once at the beginning, once in the end, or however you choose.
So you want to come up with a strategic plan on how much and where to pull the money from to buy them?
I mean, you guys weren't up for a strategic plan, so I've just been kind of planning behind the scenes. So, I mean, it's, the way that we have the budget set up, just like, you know, if we are able to go with the sewer cleaning, I, I think that we've already, you know, with the water tower, even though that's not been done yet. But, you know, there's just things that, there, we have the money in our budget, and us making these moves forward, I think, is gonna be in the right step, so it's just keeping on top of it and making sure we're doing them.
Anything else?
Hmm, I don't think so.
All right. Unless anybody's got any questions, comments, or concerns for Jamie, move on to City Attorney, John.
I don't have anything to add.
Okay, anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for John this evening? Okay. Unless there's anything else under old business, I just want to update council on the emergency plan and possibly just go ahead and take this off of old business. Um, we did have a meeting on Monday to test the magnetic locks on the library. And when the sirens sounded, gave it a couple of minutes, the doors were pulled and they did come open. We did have a discussion as to what the plan was going to be in case of an emergency, a tornado, or any other natural or unnatural disaster. Everybody got on the same page, and Laura Davis, the director of the library, is satisfied with everything that went on. And I do appreciate everyone that showed up and put their input on that, Jamie included, and Officer Perez was there. So that's all I got, unless you've got any questions.
Mark, did you, did you find out, will the system work if the power's out?
Well, will the magnetic locks work?
Yeah. I mean, will they open if we, if the power's out, will they still open?
The, hmm, as far as I know, they will. I'm not 100% on that, so don't quote me on that. But I can find out and bring it back to council, just so council is aware of that. I do believe that's what happens, because I don't think there's a backup on the, on the locks, so.
I don't know anything about them, I guess.
Yeah. I'll find out tomorrow, and then I'll let Jamie know, she can pass it on to everybody, okay? Anything else?
Take sewer report off the old business? Yep. There we go.
Um, I will put on here, did I put it in there? Um, I put it on the report. I'm in contact with the company, so hopefully I'll be able to get a little bit further with the truck parking and, and what we can do out there to get that going. If I find someone that will take a look at it.
All right, unless there's anything else under old business we want to discuss, we'll move on to new business. Okay, first thing, Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Um, open enrollment is out again. They said our plan's going up 4.05%. So we can either approve that today, you guys can think about it. I think we still have a little while to get that approved, so.
What does that, did they give us a total? What is it?
So with everyone current, everyone on their current, it is under $6,000 still.
We're still in the grandfathered plan, the same one we've always had. I'm not interested in changing it.
Yeah. She actually asked if we wanted to change it, and I just.
You'll never get anything as good as what we have.
No. So.
I'll pay the 4% increase on it.
6,000 a month? What, 6,000 a month? No, that's the, that's the base.
Total increase?
Oh, not the total increase, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's $6,000 a month. It's, yeah, $5,800 a month. But that's way under what we used to pay from when I started.
Yeah, we were paying, we roughly paid when I first got on, somewhere around $117,000 or $18,000 a year for helping.
Two, two and a half for like three and four years.
Any motion on that?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the 4.05% increase on the Blue Cross Blue Shields and Shems Plan for the city. Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. All right, moving on, GBT.
Um, I'm sure all of you know that our IT person passed away. Um, so I know Nita and the county have gone with GBT. They're here, they're local, they're coming every Thursday to take care of the county and the courthouse. Um, fortunately, unfortunately, Randy took care of our stuff and we did not get charged for a lot of what he did for us. Um, so I have, I have the estimates and a lot of it is under my spending limit. But I just kind of wanted to bring it to you guys and discuss if you guys were okay with me just going with them because they're local, they're coming to town, we know that they're gonna be here. Or if you would like me to reach out and get a couple more quotes. Who I don't know, I don't know anyone else that does this work and the next tech comes to town for the bank. And he's actually from Russell, so I can get ahold of him. Um, it was just, I guess, I was in awe of everything that, that he was just doing. Um, to take care of different things. So. Like this one's a hundred and thirty dollar monthly fee for monitoring the server. Um, this is a hundred and sixty seven. Um, cause it's twelve dollars per device and that's for, um, like antivirus and making sure that everything's okay in the firewalls. That is Jason's. We have to do some upgrading with the nitrate plant computer. It's still operating on Windows seven, which is, like I said, you get a new computer and it's old right when you turn it on. So, um, they need to upgrade to Windows ten and actually look at some firewall protection. Um, which we need because that's our water system.
That scares me because it messes up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm all for keeping it local, but I'd like to get a bid for the next step just to.
Just to see.
I mean, I'm all for.
There's quality check on the print.
Okay.
I mean, just, just kinda.
I mean, it would only take one ransomware hit.
I mean, that sounds like you're gonna be.
Everything that you're paying.
Six, eight hundred bucks?
Yeah. And that's, I just, I know it's under my spending limit, but it was just kind of a, when they sent me all, I'm like, why don't you guys just do that?
I know that if you gotta have new computers, if the, if the Windows ten one install on the old ones, it's about seventeen hundred dollars. Sure, we'll put a computer in.
Yep.
So, cause I just bought one for the county, for the fire department.
Well, and I think we're actually looking at, is it a new computer for yours?
Yeah, see, it's, something's wrong in there that it's not reading from the back panel to the front computer and the other side panel. And it's, yeah, it's kinda, it worries me.
I'll definitely get it again over next meeting.
I'll have, and I'll just, I'll list out the quotes like I do in a spreadsheet, so you guys can.
They don't have a IT person on staff, county doesn't?
GBT.
Yeah, it's GBT now. Randy came every Wednesday.
He does everything, yeah.
Yeah, he did everyone, everywhere. And yeah, I mean, GBT called to say like, you know, what are we doing? I'm like, I don't have anything, like, I mean, he took care of everything.
He was just getting ready to try to attempt the nitrate plant and then he got sick.
Wow.
Yep.
Yeah. So I'll work on that and get that for next meeting as well.
Excellent.
Uh, the next thing, Sunflower Diversified, um, they do the bus. We had talked about that earlier in the year. I haven't wrote out the letter, um, they are asking for a letter of support. I haven't done so just because I know you guys weren't in favor of supporting them financially. I know a letter of support is a little bit different. Um, but if you guys would like a letter of support, they are applying for a grant with KDOT um, to continue the services in the five counties, Barton, Rice, Stafford, Pawnee, and Rush. Um, they broke down the amount of money that they spend and how much they get. So if that's something that you guys want to do, I can type that up and Mark can sign it and we can get that sent.
Okay with that.
Yeah. Do we need a motion for that?
I would. I'd make a motion to have Jamie write a letter of support in favor of Sunflower Diversified.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
And then the title request, Jeff, I think can maybe speak a little bit more on this. I'm so confused on it. A guy called and asked us for a title on a trailer that I didn't even know we had.
This kinda happened during the time that I was gone. They had that fuel leak at the plant and they put that reclamation deal, whatever it is that they sunk out of the ground, you know? Well, the guy that I've met and dealt with down there for the years that I've been back is a guy out of Manhattan, uh, from Larson that takes care of the trailer and they're, and the job is done and they're cleaning it up, but somewhere along the line, the remediation trailer was titled to the city. And he didn't know why. We can't fight it, but it has a tag on it. And it has, and it has a Kansas tag on it and it's been issued in Stafford County. So I guess we're gonna have to call for a replacement title.
No, I have the title. I found it.
Oh, you found it?
I just can't find any agreement or what was going on.
That's just what he told me. So I guess, I don't know what we'd do with it, so I guess we turn it back over to him, you know?
I talked to John and I said, well surely KDH isn't trying to like spoof me or something?
Yeah, no, and this company's taking care of it.
Did we buy it?
I think they just, I think they just issued it to us, but.
Because it said in, in St. John, they gave us the title for it.
I assume. See, it'd been in two or three different places. It started over here at the station over west, then it went to the co-op. He was at the co-op for several years. Then it went down there. And now the other part of that is that they're getting ready to clean that up and they couldn't find anybody to clean it up. And he wanted to know if the city would be willing to make a bid to clean it up. So I talked to Jamie about it, so we did. And they've accepted the bid to get, we've got concrete pads through that driveway from east to west and then clear up to the railroad tracks and south of the plant where these remediation pipes went. So, you know, we weren't gonna make a lot of money on it, but we were gonna get it cleaned up, get the concrete out there. So anyway, is what it is, but.
What's this thing look like?
It's, it was a little enclosed trailer.
It was, it's just a little ten or twelve foot enclosed trailer that had all this equipment in it. It's that's right, north of the plant, right around the edge of the railway.
And what was it for?
But it was to, it was to take care of the problem from the fuel leak that the plant had, was how it was set up. Cause we had, we had a bad leak several years ago and it's just, it happened during the time I was gone. And then when I came back, Mel didn't say a word about it. So it's just.
How does that happen?
The title.
I don't know. Nobody knows.
Somebody titled it for the city.
It's in the city's name.
Purple, purple. His name's on the title. Well, I know, but I mean, who signed it?
Was it on insurance document?
Nobody, nobody signed it as a representative of the city?
To get it in our name, somebody.
What's the date on it?
I'm gonna guess that it would have been Jonah.
July twenty fourth of our month.
You can request a title history.
Yeah. I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume that Jonah signed it.
And someone from them had to sign it as basically.
I'd just like to make sure we didn't purchase it.
No, I don't think we purchased, I, well, I'm not gonna say.
I guess I think this is it. It says trailer out powder plant.
That's pretty descriptive.
Yeah, it's descriptive.
Well, and I tried to go find the minutes.
It's just an enclosed little trailer. It's got.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the low.
I'm like, oh my word.
Yeah, I went back.
He found it kinda weird too when he called me.
I'm confused.
I was when he called me.
Well, and then I think he called randomly and talked to Pam too and she was like.
I told her, I said, I told him, I said, you need to call up and talk to Pam or Jamie. I said, I don't know anything about this thing.
Well, I don't know.
I don't know, but it's been tagged, it should.
Yeah, it's got, it's got a tag on it.
No, they probably got their title after they signed the original.
Yeah, cause they reprinted it, wouldn't they?
Two nine, is that right?
I think it's the last tag.
Purchase, see, and that's what it says. It says purchase date, seven twenty-three of two thousand and nine.
That would have been a, that would have been a Mel Jonah deal.
She does?
Yeah, or Lisa Melton.
But how do they keep track of it?
Especially if they have enough still in here after ten years.
Well, they just took it out, what, two years ago, that trailer?
No, it's still there.
Still there.
Yeah. Yeah, it's still there. Got a fence around it. And that was the deal that somebody had to rack it out and clean up those pads and stuff, you know? I said, we'll be glad to. And he said another thing, he said, the title says that the city owns that trailer. I said, why would the city own that trailer?
I guess the issue I have is, is it have stuff on it that the city doesn't wanna then be responsible for disposing of this trailer or something?
Well, it's just got equipment in it. It's, it's a radiation deal is what it is.
Plugs air back down into the holes is what it is.
I mean, it's nothing major, but I mean, it's been, it's been reworked for that specific purpose. Got holes in it, it burns, it burns off, it gets.
KDH wants us to sign the title over to them. We'll find out if we bought the trailer or not first.
County treasurer would have that lead there?
Maybe. Usually you have to contact county department.
I have to go to the state.
When you fill out question title history.
Yeah, it's just weird. When he said that, I thought it was weird. I thought, why would we wanna own that thing, you know?
If you email Melissa, she can send you.
I don't understand why they wanna resign the old city anyway.
So if you email Melissa.
I mean, if it's their property, why would they ever sign it, give us a title for it?
Because see, they contract, they contract people, just in Larson, that's what they do. But it came directly from, from, from the, is it the department?
Just trying to find out.
Weird deal.
Okay, just see what you can find out first, all right?
There's just a bunch of random weird campers going on.
Yeah, it's just strange.
Okay, um, we now have an executive session for ten minutes under the police department for potential hiring to, for non-elected personnel. Do you want to include us while you're on the table?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Bring that in.
Motion carries. We will resume at seven fifty-three.
I forgot.
Called this meeting back to order. I had asked that we extend the executive session for another ten minutes.
So moved, second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. We'll resume at eight oh four.
We got about a ten minutes.
Called this meeting back to.
Then I will go home.
I would make a motion to hire Matthew Woods for the full-time position on the PD at seventeen dollars an hour with a ninety-day evaluation and six months to move to St. John.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
Oh, that's good. Must have just happened.
Unless there's any other business this evening, then entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.